Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, October 24th. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller, Lancy, Beck, Peeper, Chantet, Soffa, Wolf, Baron, Lehman, Ayazi, Malé, Uwer, Saron, Vocal Singer. That's 10.
Can you hear us, Dan?
Yes, indeed.
That's all them in transit, so we have. Okay. Next up is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for BATV tonight for the broadcast and for recording. Do we have anything on items to be removed or changed tonight?
No.
Okay. We'll move right on to item number four, matters from the public for items not on the agenda tonight. I believe we have some.
Good evening. Donna McGrath, 407 Elm Street. I have another 141 signatures for the 25 mile an hour speed limit change. Who should I give it to?
Just take the clerk. I'll work.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I just want to mention a couple of the comments. I've been trying for 20 some years to get this done. This is not from me. This is from other people. Called police several times. Speed bumps. Speed bumps work. Makes common sense. And then the other part that I have is I've been a resident of Batavia since 1986 and I've raised two of my children here. One of them lives on McKee Street and with two of my grandchildren. I'm concerned about the desire of the city to maintain the downtown as a place where people want to come and enjoy the river and businesses. I say this because it seems to me that the major property owners are treated differently than others, namely Batavia Enterprises. This spring, I started a group of volunteers who have taken it upon themselves to plant and beautify areas of the town town that seem to be lacking in investment of resources and our expertise, such as the plantings along South Batavia Avenue where the business owners have contributed funds and volunteers contributed the labor to plant the city beds, to beautify the Elder Day Center on Wilson Street, which hosts some of our cherished residents, and worked with Scott on the Dogbone Planters along Houston Street and the Depot Pine. On the same hand, I have been trying unsuccessfully to get the city to uphold its ordinances when it applies to the Batavia Plaza, which takes up an entire block of the core of our downtown. Can I get an agreement on that? You don't think so? You don't think it takes an entire block? I began this effort in May, five months ago. The landscaping has not been maintained as required by the development agreement entered into the city and the owner. Irrigation hoses lie on the ground, apparently are not operative. There is no mulching, just bare ground, and this situation has been going on for years. Because Batavia deserves better, in the middle of June, I wrote the mayor, the administrator, and community development director to look at the situation. I also filed a formal complaint with Walgreens corporate. I heard back from Walgreens and BEI were arguing about the responsibility two months later in response to another call. I was told that the Walgreens would replace dead plants, a permit for irrigation would be applied for, and BEI would weed, mulch, and replace plantings along Shumway and First. At that time, someone mulched the Walgreens area with about an inch of mulch. Nothing has been done with the irrigation. It still lies on the ground, and nothing has been done to the rest of Shumway and the First, which is right at that corner where there's a bulldog and some benches. In September, I called the administrator, or I didn't call, I emailed, the administrator who told me that she had met with Austin and that work would be done within two weeks. It's now six weeks since I was told that and five months since I raised the issue. So here we are, five months later, and anyone driving, walking, or biking down this area, the actual center of town, excited to go to the new brewery, the new florist, the new location of Hearth and Hammer, Water Street Studios, and other businesses. They still pass plain dirt instead of mulch or plantings, irrigation hoses lying on the ground, a rusting and dangerous fence along Wilson Street. I ask myself, do we think that little of ourselves as a community that we deserve this? Do some property owners believe that the regulations they agreed to as part of obtaining millions of dollars from the city just doesn't matter because they won't be enforced? And I just saw today, for the first time, a sign for conditional use hearing for the Plaza. That means ownership is asking for something exceptional. Maybe Batavia should require something back. Thank you.
Community Development have any update or anything for, have we talked to BEI about that property?
I had corresponded with Austin, I'll say, two weeks ago, but I have not heard a response back from them specifically. I have not looked at it to see if they did any additional mulch. There has been some mulch put on the property, but there are some areas where it is missing, yes.
I'd like to have that followed up on so we can find out why they haven't done anything over there. I know they've done construction on the water, not Water Street, First Street side, that corner building. I know they did a lot of work over there.
And they also recently reblacktopped and striped the entire parking lot, and I think that Jeff Albertson will be meeting with them soon regarding that, and perhaps we can mention these items to them at this time.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. And while we have the two of you here, can I ask Bill a question? Have you found out anymore about the speed limit that other towns have enacted? Did anybody reply to your FOIA's?
I'm still putting the FOIA information together because some of them did it so long ago, they've destroyed their records, but I can tell you, the towns of Wheaton, Naperville, Aurora, North Aurora, Geneva, St. Charles, Secamore, and Oswego all have 25, and some of them for a long time. And I, well, I shouldn't say it because I don't have the facts, but it appears that there's a real difference of opinion. The statute says that you have to do an engineering and safety study before you can adjust the speed limits, but nowhere does it say that you have to do a study of every street to do that. And in fact, some of the ones I've seen have done a speed study, just like the city is having done now, on their arterials, and the response to that is to lay out the arterial speed limits and lower the speed limits for all their residential things. So I think, I'm not so sure, the money is a huge thing, and who knows how long it takes to do science. So anyway, but I'm going to put it all together.
Okay.
They've had to ask me for extensions.
I didn't see you Saturday down there, so I figured I'd ask you tonight.
Yeah, no problem. Okay. Bill McGrath, 407 Elm. And some of it did it with their home rule of powers. I'm not sure.
And I'm still not so sure whether it's a state statute or whether it's an I.D.O. rule.
Well, it's a state statute.
It is part of the state statute.
Yes, yes. Having to do with the speed limits of roads, depending upon whether they're urban or not urban, is in the statute.
Okay. Thank you.
A question along those lines. When I was a kid, I can remember there being, I think, a formal, I don't know if it was like a city commission or an appointed group, it was like a Batavia Beautification Committee of some sort. Does anybody know any history on what that was? Was it funded through the city? Was there a formal charter?
I know about that. The Beautification Committee was just that. It turned into, it turned into an overarching kind of committee that's officially sponsored in the city ordinance. The reason for that was to, so that they could have insurance cover on what their activities were. So it covered, frankly, the fireworks, I think is ostensibly underneath that, and the beautification, I can't tell you what the Beautification Commission part of that did. I honestly can't tell you that.
So Bill, was that access? If it's fireworks, was it access?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you. It's access. You can look at that up in the code and...
Right, and it's toy drive as well.
Toy drive, yeah, absolutely. Actually, if anybody had a really good idea and it needed to be organized, you know, they would get under the umbrella of the Access Committee and ostensibly be insured, but I don't know. Chris, you would know. You have to look at it. So, but that's why, that's what it was. Thank you.
Next then would be a presentation on reinstating the Loyalty Day Parade. We do have somebody here.
Good evening. I'm Steve Hunter, commander of the VFW Post 1197 here in Batavia. The Loyalty Day Parade is something that we used to do here in Batavia. It was very popular. Everybody loved it, and for the past couple of years, we've been getting a lot of response from the community asking us to reinstate the Loyalty Day Parade. So we put together a committee. We started researching it and the viability of Loyalty Day, which is something that's very near and dear to the VFW. We're actually chartered by National to conduct an event on Loyalty Day, including possibility of parades. But upon review, after months of meetings with the committee and the city of Batavia, May parade seems to be not feasible due to city services, and they've requested that we change it to a Fourth of July parade. So we brought that request back to the VFW Post, passed it through our committee and through the Post, and the Post is very favorable to committing time and resources to a Fourth of July parade that would basically follow the path of the homecoming parade and end at the fireworks display. With the city services already working that day, it would have a minimal impact on the police and fire and emergency management for that day. So that's where we're at moving forward with it. There's been a ton of outcry for a parade back here in Batavia, and if you have any questions, let me know. We'll update you. James Reeves is our commissioner right now. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it today, do a medical emergency, so I'm just here to update you guys and let you know where we stand and what we're working on. Is there any questions or anything?
Quick question. What was the logistical issue with having it in May? I mean, it was there for as long as I can remember, as a kid even, for years.
Correct, and that's where we're trying to work back towards it, but the request was made to move it to July.
It was just the, having the separation, because the city services would already be out for Fourth of July, we'd have an entire another mobilization of an all-hands situation for the police department and then also the public works. Together, it's about a $13,000 expense to have it on a separate day.
We'd already have the signs out to block off Main Street just to make it, you know, a pedestrian path through the fireworks afterwards. And I wasn't ready for that, but I kind of liked that idea because it does then minimize the cost to the city to put that out there for, you know, to have the parade, and I think it would be something that I think a lot of the public would like.
And it worked so well the first time the homecoming parade tried it, that they've permanently changed over to that.
When you've got two parking lots, one to stage in to start it and one to end in, I think that works out really good. Personally, I'd like to see it revived again, even if it is called the Fourth of July Parade. I mean, I kind of feel bad that we're like one of the only towns that doesn't have anything but a homecoming parade. You know, I think it's something that we should try to reinstate. Tony?
Yeah, I recall before we moved here, my wife and I had our two children at the time and came into town and stumbled across the Loyalty Parade and thought, wow, this is awesome. And it kind of, you know, pushed us to want to move here. So a question I have for you, when was the last year it was the parade happened? I know there was one near the end that got canceled because of weather.
That was pre-COVID and pre-my time with the VFW. I think it's either, yeah, 18 or 19. I think it was the last one that I saw the actual binder for.
Would the VFW still have that type of celebration that they've been having the last couple of years where they have just some type of an event for Loyalty Day at the VFW?
Yeah, correct. We will have to do a separate event for Loyalty Day at the VFW that will mimic our Memorial Day and Veterans Day services. That'll be out at our memorial, out on our grounds. But yeah, we're obligated to hold an event for Loyalty Day according to our bylaws.
And I would just add to that, that knowing a little history, the May 1st day being Loyalty Day Parade is, can be a very divisive issue, as you're probably aware. You know, 30 miles from here in 1886, on May 1st, there was 80,000 workers marching to demand a eight-hour workday, which was actually the law at the time, but just not being enforced. And four days later, there was the Haymarket Affair where, you know, some innocent people were hung that weren't even there. So, yeah, but I'm sure that's not the intention, but there is, and the history goes further that, you know, loyalty was put in place in 1921 during the First Red Scare, and then again in the 50s with the un-American activities pushing for that, specifically on that May 1st day to keep unions from expanding and having a chance to celebrate. I just bring that up to point out some history, and I don't, you know, again, I thought it was a fantastic event when it was going, and I don't think it was in any way related to any of that, but my thought was, and it does make sense on Fourth of July, but I think this town could use a Flag Day Parade, you know, as we have our new monument out here and, you know, have a real connection, we have a real reason to celebrate that day, but that's my thoughts.
The city does have a Flag Day Committee, and we are working on events for Flag Day with the new memorial also. So that celebration is something separate, but this parade is something that's been planned by the VFW for the past year. It's been in the planning process and the committee process, and we were ready to go on Loyalty Day. The city, however, was not due to, like we said, the costs and constraints on the city services and personnel. So we're going to move to July 4th with, according to the city's request. Then our volunteers normally don't work on the Fourth of July. We don't do anything on the Fourth of July simply because it's a family event. Everybody's got barbecues and other things to attend to, so it's tough for us to administer. But we've got the volunteers on board that decided they will switch from Loyalty Day to July 4th to support the city of Batavia and promote Americanism and patriotism here in our fine city. Okay? Thank you guys for your time. I appreciate you allowing me to speak today.
Thank you.
And also our best to Jim.
My favorite subject, discussion on the continued, or continued discussion regarding Wagner Road Gate.
Thank you. We had sent a letter to the city of Aurora asking them to open/remove the gate that is at Mesa Drive, just north of the Walmart. And after delayed response, we finally got a letter back from the mayor of Aurora, and his opinion was he understands the position that the city has, but they still feel that they would like to keep the gate closed, and as a compromise, he is offering to compensate the city for maintenance of our road to, you know, compensate us for our costs for the additional traffic burden that is caused by the gate. So that is what I have presented to you this evening. Essentially, that's the question is, are we willing to do that, or are we wishing to keep that gate, remove that gate, or one of the options is to, you know, gate it at the city line? They recognize that that is our right, that we could do that. That's kind of a tough option, but, you know, it seems at this point that Aurora isn't really willing to open that gate, so I'm not sure what the council feels about that, so.
Where would, where would we put the other gate?
At the city limits on Wagner, just south of...
The other end? Just enclose it?
Yeah, see, to me, all that does is then it's going to drive the neighborhood crazy because people are going to drive down that street and know they have to turn around. You know, and that's one of the detriments I see to it now, is people try to get through there, and then they have to turn around and drive back through the neighborhood and then figure out how to get back around to it.
Right. And I think that the idea behind that is not necessarily that we want that gate there. We'd rather have both streets open. I mean, that's the idea. I mean, it's a very circuitous route to drive through that neighborhood to try and get there, so I don't think that's what we would like to do.
I still feel like the benefit to the gate being gone is going to be for the neighborhood. You know, that the neighborhood is then now going to not have to drive a mile to get to a store. They can drive three blocks to get to that store. I mean, I felt for a long time, and I still offer, I'll go out and cut the thing off. We'll let somebody scrap it, and it'll be gone in one night. Dan, you have your hand up?
And you took the words right out of my mouth. I'm almost beside myself that this is an issue. It's embarrassing that it took as long as they did to respond to the request. The gate being installed in the first place, as far as I'm concerned, was ill-advised. I guess I get why they did it, but with all due respect to our neighbors to the south, I would love if they would put in writing why the gate needs to be up and give a persuasive argument of what their rationale is to continue to do this. Gates are used for very different purposes, to restrict access. This is not one of them. This is unacceptable, and again, with all due respect, I'm embarrassed that they're digging their heels in on this one. This gate needs to come down.
This gate, does it only restrict car traffic or all traffic is it?
There's a gap for pedestrians to get through, but I mean, you can't drive through it. I mean, you know, in theory, you could, it's not locked, so somebody could unlock the gate and open it up if they wish to do so.
Okay, so this isn't like a gated neighborhood gate. It is a city kind of man-to-maintained access gate.
Yeah, I mean, there's no manning of it. I mean, it's an unmanned gate. It's just a fence that's across the public right of way. Yeah.
I saw somebody opening it up the other day and going through, literally in the middle of the day. And then they closed it.
Goes to the range, right?
You know, I've had the opportunity to have several lengthy conversations with several mayors of Aurora about this, and it gets down, and the argument never changes is that the folks there in that subdivision are totally convinced that if that gate comes down, they'll be overwhelmed by traffic because everybody will want to go to the Walmart and not have to go out onto Kirk Road. And now that we've just built 242 more townhouses in Batavia on the other side of the street, that would just be more additional traffic that would come down there. So the mayor, Irwin, says to me about, I don't know, shortly, about the same time, I guess he talked to you, that he understands where Batavia's at and why we'd like to have this, but he would like to work out an agreement, whereas the city of Aurora will pay for the maintenance on wind energy pass from Redant Road or whenever it is there across this Wagner Road, down Wagner Road to the subdivision, and then both areas they would pay for and maintain it, and that would be their way of kind of making up for letting all their traffic go down there. Now, I've gone down there and counted the houses that are in there, and I think there's 138 or 139.
I'm in that vicinity, yeah.
You know, the next problem you got is they're all in the Batavia School District. That's another very interesting conversation to have with Aurora because now we have 892 houses in the city of Aurora that are in the Batavia School District in that area down in there. So that's kind of a rub, and I guess the city tells me they've got one of the school districts down there that's all upset about that being the case and that now the, with the outlet, with the casino and that hotel being built there, there's going to be a significant tax increase, and they've worked out a deal with the Batavia School District that I believe they're going to get $700,000 a year. I think it's seven.
They're voting on it right now, actually. It's an intergovernmental agreement, and that was in the board book.
Was that in the board? Okay, well, I wonder where the other 400 is going because there was, that's, I don't know. Anyway, the Batavia School District is going to get something down there. So I just would share the story that, I would tell you that one of the best things I ever did was be a very disagreeable mayor with the gentleman that built that area down there on, that has a problem, because he wanted to come up and he wanted to build that whole subdivision all the way up to Hooverwood School or where Hooverwood School is. Then he wanted to go across the street and buy that piece, which is now the 242 townhomes, and he wanted to do all that and would do it if we, the city of Batavia, would lay down our boundary agreement and let him annex and zone all that into Aurora, because Aurora has much more friendlier development standards at that time than Batavia did. And so I said, absolutely not. I would not support that, and he went storming out of here, and he's never been back since. But he did build that down there, and, I mean, Aurora let him do it. They knew what they were getting into, and so I don't know what to tell you. I mean, it's, you know, I suppose we could lock the gate someday and see what happened there, and we'd be on Channel 2 News probably and everybody else about the whole thing, so we better be prepared to have our public reaction to it, because this would be one they, those newsboys would just love this. This would be...
I think we swing it open and test it, see what happens.
It would be gate, gate.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we'd be lead probably on the 257 and 9, you know, that's...
I just feel like if we would have had the say in it and it was developed within our boundary, we would never have put that in there, or at least I don't believe any city council that I've ever been a part of in the last 20-plus years would have done that. So, you know, at this point, I think we have to come to some agreement with them and get rid of the gate.
Yeah, well, everybody that lives there goes to the Batavia Schools unless they're going to a private school. So they all, they all got their bulldog jackets and their bumper stickers on their cars and they're Batavians through and through until they get to that gate, and then they have to shed their identity for a while.
The idea behind it is not to put another gate up. I mean, I think the idea is preferably to have free flow.
Right, and traffic patterns will develop what they're going to be, and I guarantee you that it will make life easier for that neighborhood without that gate there. You know, I just, you know, I don't see anybody from the townhouses having any reason to cross, you know, the road and go through that neighborhood to get into Walmart. I just don't see that happening.
Anybody's tried to drive through that. Mayor and I, when I first started here, we drove into that subdivision. He was showing me this gate, and we literally did get lost. So, you know, it's not easy to go circumnavigate.
Right, the people that are going to go through there and use that are going to be the people in the neighborhood that'll make life easier, so they don't have to go out onto Kirk Road to get to the shopping center. You know, and I guess I don't want to make it easier for people to go into there, you know, and leave their tax money there, but the reality of it is, I think it'll make all those houses worth more without a gate across an access point to their neighborhood. Dan, you still have your hand up or another comment?
Another comment. I guess I would ask if Your Honor believes that this would be the action that would finally fix this problem, I would make a motion that the city of Batavia lock this gate and force the city of Aurora to make a decision on what it really holds as its morals and ethics.
And our gate.
Right, impose a gate, I guess.
I have no problem with it.
We have to put our own up.
We have to put our own barricade.
Our own at the other end would be there.
I'd be happy, I'd be happy to chip in my salary until it's paid for. I would make a motion that we put a gate in.
I don't want a gate anywhere down there, Dan. I want it gone.
What is it going to take to get them removed? Do we have to put an illegal lock on them, or do we put our own up? What is it that we have to do?
I think what the, the concept that I think would happen is you would have to put up our own gate or barricade of some sort, maybe it's not a formal gate, but some type of a barricade across the road until they agree to open the gate. They're going to have to open the gate, because if we block it on our end, there's no other way other than to go to the south side. way other than to go at the south, south side. And then once that happens, then we remove our gate.
And then they put theirs back.
Say.
And then will they put theirs back?
Well, then, you know, we're going to be playing the game, I guess, you know, and.
Instead of building a whole gate, we could just close that for ongoing maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be a formal gate. It can be a barricade of some sort or what have you and, and, you know, the idea.
I would, I would support whatever community development and local works believe is the solution to force this issue to be done with.
I found it quite interesting that the, that Mayor Erwin suggested that we could put a, we would, could put a gate up and they would have no choice. I'm wondering if he's signaling that, you know, if the, if the residents that are, you know, giving him an earful about it, see that, then he can say, well, there's nothing I can do.
I'm pretty sure he was telegraphing to us.
I can't believe that this is a big enough problem for that neighborhood that they would not welcome the idea that instead of having to travel out onto Kirk Road or make the, the route all the way around the south, you know, the, the west and south side to get back over to shop along there, that they wouldn't want that gone. I wouldn't want that in my neighborhood.
It's actually great more traffic in the neighborhood.
Right.
People are going to stay in the neighborhood longer.
And as far as paying for what we think the maintenance is going to be on the road, I don't even want to touch that. I don't want, I just, that to me is not a solution to this.
I found that strange too, that he would be willing to, oh, we'll, we'll pay you for it. So maybe you're right, Dan. Maybe he's signaling that, you know, give me an out here so I can.
He wants you to pay for the road, is what he's saying. Pay for the current, redoing of the road and then pay the ongoing maintenance every five years or whatever it would be. Aurora would pay for Batavia Street.
And frankly, if you go to that point, it's like, well, why is it even in the city of Aurora? Might as well de-annex and bring it into Batavia.
Yeah. We could solve that too. We just annex all of it.
I think the residents would like that, but Aurora's not giving up nothing.
Right, of course not. Right.
Wouldn't you say it was 100 in some houses?
Too bad we didn't know that sooner.
We could draw up an annexation and then see what they say after that.
No, they, we can't.
We couldn't do it. They would have to voluntarily.
If they're already annexed into Aurora, we cannot annex them into Batavia.
I get that.
They would have to disconnect.
Right.
Right. Yes.
We can call up to the school board as they're voting on the intergovernment agreement tonight and add a amend that to, okay, we agree, but the gate comes up.
I mean, one thing we could do is we could have signage put up saying, you know, put our, put our, you know, line in the sand, say, you know, if the gate is not removed by X date, January 2nd, you know, 2024, this road will be closed.
That sounds like a motion.
I'd like to be able to avoid that. I mean, does it take inviting the mayor to come up here and sit down in a room with us or how do we get him to understand we want the gate gone?
You know, that, our position is clear, is, is, our position is as clear as theirs is back to us. We want the gate removed. They do not want the gate removed.
Talk to the staffs about it and.
And I don't want to cut off the neighborhood by putting the gate at the other end. I mean, that to me is just ludicrous.
All the gates are Aurora, so I mean.
Right. And is there another gate like that in Aurora?
I'm aware of it.
The only thing I know that they've done even close to that is on Randall when they changed and there's the access road along Randall that they cut off the neighborhoods from direct access to Randall. And that was, I think, due to accidents along Randall from the side streets. I, I mean, if that's what it takes and we ask them to remove it by January 1st and they don't, then we remove it and they can sue us if they want. I don't know.
I don't know the weekend. It was their gate.
If the mayor's just looking for, if the mayor of Aurora is just looking for an out to say to his residents there, if they're, I mean, if that's the true excuse is that the residents are complaining, then the signage saying this is going up and then the mayor can be like, well, you know, this is, your, your neighborhood is going to be blocked off in two months if we don't get rid of this gate because Batavia is putting a gate up.
I don't think that would stand legal challenge.
Doesn't that serve their purpose anyway because the traffic that is cutting through to go north would be blocked by our gate on the north then?
Yeah, but they would have to open up their gate because otherwise they'd have no way out of their subdivision then, so.
I mean, I guess I, I look at that and I see if I come out of Walmart there and I want to get back to Batavia, I'm just going to go out to Kirk anyways for the light, why would I try to drive through that neighborhood and then have to come back out to a light at Kirk and win energy anyway? I mean, that.
It's not a grid pattern either.
Right. And it's back behind the store. It's not like it lines up with the store entrance or anything else. It's further west than the store.
It lines up with one of the entrances.
It doesn't.
Far entrance where you pull in for the auto, the very end of the park.
But it's not, to me, it's not, I don't think it would be a high traffic cut through. I just don't see that.
I think most of the time, anybody tries that the first time, unless you live right in that neighborhood, you're going to be like, that's, that's not the way to go.
Right.
I think looking at this gate now, what's going to happen is we'll build it, we'll build our gate, close it, and then they'll open that gate, but they probably won't tear it down. So then it will be the same thing at the end of the day. We won't be, so we can open our gate and then they're going to close this one.
The other thing I think we could do is we could propose to Aurora that we open the gate up for two or three months, whatever, and see how that affects the neighborhood. I mean, if it's overwhelming every day that we're getting a complaint from there, you know, then we just block the street off at that end.
We can certainly propose that. I anticipate that what they will do is, as they did this time, drag their feet for several months until they come back and say no.
Right. Because that's, it took a year to get response.
Yeah. Abby?
Is there also a proposal, you know, they offer to pay our expenses for the road maintenance that their drivers are causing going out onto Batavia roads? Is there a creative estimation that we can give them that's an exorbitant amount of money that would also show the residents of Aurora, like, here's what it's going to cost you to keep this gate there?
Million dollars.
One million dollars. That's a lot of sidewalks that we can build for a million dollars, keep the gate and fund our, fund our sidewalk program.
If we're looking at Wind Energy Pass, I mean, there's also signalization costs and impacts too. So, I mean, you know, how much are we paying for maintenance of, you know, causing that signal, so.
Or take the gate down and this goes away.
Yes, well, right. Don't wait to hear.
Waste our money.
I like that idea. I think the most affordable approach, it sounds like, would be sending a letter to start and then possibly building a new gate after that. I don't know.
Well, we've already sent one, you know, one letter to them and asked them, so that was the response that took a year.
And high price tag for new street maintenance or whatever.
Perhaps we go that route.
I'd say that should be the next correspondence and I'd also like to extend in that letter that, you know, if that's not acceptable to him, then we need to sit down, you know, and get him up here and have him explain to the 14 of us why they have to keep that. I mean, I always thought that was a temporary device there till traffic patterns developed or the neighborhood changed or Kirk Road changed, you know, and what really got built down there. And I don't think that there's, there is still some land between the Prairie Path and the Wind Energy that's not developed. Am I correct?
On the east side, on the east side of Kirk?
On the west side. Stuff that would funnel into this neighborhood if that was a cut through.
Uh, not too much. There's some redevelopment, a couple of redevelopment pieces, but not a lot.
So there's not like there's going to be another 100 townhomes north of there that are going to, you know, drive the, the traffic counts up in the neighborhood if there was a cut through.
Aurora Town Homes run right up to the Batavia Town Homes.
Okay. Because I, I really think that, I don't know how we have to do this, but we got to convince them that this just needs to go. I mean, I think, you know, writing a check to the city of Batavia every year to me is just kind of foolish, you know, and I don't, I don't like that idea. I think if we put a high enough price tag on it, they just kind of walk, hopefully walk away from it. You know, and I know the last time we discussed this, we had a couple of residents here from that area that, you know, voiced their concern about what the traffic pattern was going to be like. And that's why I think just temporarily open it, you know, ask them if we could do that, monitor the traffic and see what changes, you know, and honestly, I think if we're, go out there and watch that, it'd be the neighborhood that'd be driving through that intersection because it would be benefit to them.
Have to spend a couple of months measuring the traffic that's.
I know, before.
Going out and then what happens and then they're going to say, well, yep, there was zero traffic before and now there's infinitely more traffic. So, I mean, you can't.
Right. But again, I think that the traffic would be generated from within the neighborhood anyway, rather than going down Wind Energy and going out onto Kirk.
Most of the traffic's going to be the neighborhood traffic.
Mm-hmm. I mean, it's not like it's a straight through shot like Wind Energy or anything else out there.
So we need direction.
They want to leave the gate up. It's $2 million a year. And if they want to take the gate down, we're all happy. We can have a ribbon cutting out there when we take the gate down. You know, it'd be really good.
I'll prepare a letter to that effect.
Okay.
If that's the consensus. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Might get a quick response to that. Okay, moving on to item number seven, ordinance 23-42, mending the city Batavia subdivision code Title 11, the city code establishing pre-tree preservation regulations.
All right. Thank you. So the city of Batavia currently doesn't, has not adopted a tree preservation ordinance. Through public participation in recent projects, staff has determined it would be appropriate to add these regulations to the city code. Of the communities in Kane County, along the Fox River, the city of Batavia is one of the last communities to adopt a tree preservation ordinance. The comprehensive plan identified a tree preservation ordinance as an issue to be addressed in the environmental element. The city historically has relied on the involvement of residents, passion for tree preservation, the tree commission and plan commission, along with staff, development comments to encourage developers to preserve trees. The development of Prairie Commons is an example of stakeholders effectively preserving large areas of mature trees on the periphery of, of the development site. In more recent years, staff has found it challenging to prevent the removal of trees and require the replacement of trees. If a developer is willing to replace a tree, it is typically at a lower rate than proposed in the draft tree preservation ordinance. The new requirements would apply towards development or redevelopment of any property with the exclusion of existing single-family or two-family dwellings. The intention of, of staff is to implement the proposed regulations on a smaller scale, focusing on new development and redevelopments initially, then revisiting the code after five years of implementation to determine if expanding to other properties is appropriate or feasible. The general structure of the tree preservation ordinance as drafted is reflective of Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plannings format or CMAP. You know, staff has worked with both the tree commission and plan commission to draft these regulations as well as with city staff members. And then I would like to highlight that, you know, staff has drafted a tree removal criteria. The draft tree preservation ordinance outlines specific criteria for removal of any tree over six inches in caliper. The caliper shall be measured at four and a half feet above the ground. The criteria for removal are the following: a tree is dead, dying, diseased, or is listed on the undesirable tree list or a threat to public health or safety; the tree interferes with the provision of public services or is a hazard to traffic; the preservation of an existing tree would impede the growth and health of other trees within the development; and then the location of a tree prevents development or redevelopment that cannot be designed to protect the tree. The following shall be considered when applying that, this criteria; the preservation of an existing tree is in conflict with the requirement of Title 10 Sony Code Regulations; the preservation of an existing tree would impede the development's ability to comply with the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance; and the preservation of an existing tree impedes the development's ability to grade a site. So essentially, when an applicant would come in with, with, for development, they would have to present a tree preservation plan, which they already currently do provide the city, but with that, they would have to note their reason for wanting to remove a tree and they would have to find a reason for one of those areas of criteria. If a tree is determined to be, that they are removing it during the development, staff has proposed three different tables of, of tree replacement rates. One is the undesirable tree list, meaning these are trees that are considered invasive in nature, but they still have some environmental quality for species. So staff is requesting currently a one for every tree that's removed, replaced with one tree. And then on table two, as drafted in the ordinance, your standard tree that is desirable in the community, as the size of the tree and its caliper increases, the, the rate of which would, the replacement would increase. So a tree that's a little bit over six inches would require two replacement trees for every tree taken away, but a tree that's, you know, over 30 inches would require something closer than I believe 10 as proposed. And the reason for that is that the environmental impact of that larger tree is significant and would require multiple smaller trees to replace it. And then with working with the tree commission, they have suggested and to staff and the council that table three be enacted and that is focusing on heritage trees. Those are tree species that are found to be significantly important to our region and our, you know, our native environment and they see a little bit larger value. So if a tree like that is being removed, require additional tree replacement beyond that you'd see on table two, just because of that significance. If a tree is physically not possible to be planted on the site, you know, sometimes there's, you can't have too many trees, a fee in lieu would be required. The plan commission suggested a rate of $400 per replacement tree. Those trees can be, that $400 can be used for trees in our parkway, trees and planted throughout the city. So that's another mechanism to, to beautify the city and provide trees to our residents in other areas surrounding the development that's not possible. And then, you know, there is special relief from the tree preservation requirements. If a tree is dead, dying, and diseased or a threat to public health or safety, it is not required for replacement. That is something that the city would, would encourage a developer to remove and we do not want to penalize them for, for assisting in that manner. If the tree interferes with the provisions of public services or is a hazard to traffic, so, you know, the requirement for utilities or the public right of way and things like that, that is, again, another mechanism for them to not have to replace said tree. And then the property where a tree is located is owned by a government agency. This is something that the plan commission discussed in detail and ultimately decided that this is more of a policymaking decision and defer to the committee of the whole and city council to, to discuss that manner if they want to exempt government agencies from tree replacement, you know, on their property. Again, that's something the plan commission deferred to you and we can discuss that. And then I just wanted to note in the memo, there was one error in the timeline for action. It originally had October 2nd, which would have been reflective of when the memo was originally drafted. If the committee whole takes action on this ordinance, it would be on the November 6th city council agenda. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yeah, I've got one. Way back when, when we first, before I was mayor, and that's way back when, we formed the Batavia Tree Commission. I think it was a result of the Dutch elm disease that had struck Batavia in the mid 1950s. And there was a group of folks, I knew many of them, and they're all, every one of them is dead now, including Frank Sopp, who was the city arborist, and he just died three weeks ago, but he's gone now too. But one of the things that they enacted, and as far as I know, we were enforcing it as a rule, was is that anytime anybody builds a new house, they have to buy and plant in their yard at least one new tree. And the, the tree commission encouraged them for a while. If they bought the first one, they would, they, the tree commission then would give them the money to, half the money to buy a second one. So there was this move. Are we still doing that at all? Do you know?
My understanding that the city code does regulate new development and require parkway trees to be planted, I do not believe we have something in the books that require on the private side.
No, we don't. I mean, in a planned development, like a townhouse development or something like that, you know, we'll have a landscape plan that's approved showing, you know, where trees and other landscaping should go, but we don't have anything specific on private property for single-family homes in place.
I can certainly put you guys in the car and we'll go for a ride and I can show you places where I know this was enacted and done. Now, much of it may have been 40, 50 years ago, but that was an ordinance at some point that you, you applied and got a building permit that the city then required that you plant a tree. And that's, you know, I've had some other mayors in here recently and one of the things everybody seems to talk about is the wealth of tree growing that Batavia has, that we are very much the tree-growing town and one that most people have a lot of admiration for. And how did this happen? I said, well, you had a lot of activists in the 1950s when we lost. It was a huge number, maybe 5, 6,000 trees were taken down by the Dutch elm disease. number, maybe 5,000, 6,000 trees were taken down by the Dutch elm disease, and there was this group that was formed. And you can go up to 515 North Washington Avenue, and Eldora Hoover, who Hoover Wood is partially named after, is a teacher down at Alice Gustafson School, and she was on the first Batavia Tree Commission. And she went out, and any new tree that somebody talked about was okay, she went and bought herself one and planted it in her yard. So, for a while up there at 515 North Washington, most of it's in the back, but they had all these trees of different types that were planted back there. Now, interestingly, a lot of them have died, and I know Frank Sopp used to go up there and walk around and look at what was still surviving and what was dying, but, you know, we've had some people be very passionate about planting trees in town, so.
I guess the one question that I would have on this is the government side of it. Would that be, you know, just the Park District, School District, Library, that type of stuff? Or would it also be that we would apply that to us as the city when we do projects? Because I think that's something that I would like to have in there, that, you know, we go out and we do something, we hold ourselves to the same standard, you know, whether it be for landscaping, or for tree planting in parkways and stuff. If we're redoing a street, I'd like to see us do the same thing, hold ourselves to the same standards. So, if that has to get changed in there to include that, I would propose that we do that, because I think that's something that we should do as a city when we, you know, do a project and we take down 10 trees, we should put 10 trees back.
Yeah, so, I can add to, so that the, at the very minimum, staff's, you know, staff's intention was to require regardless, you know, so if we were doing a similar project to Mahoney Creek, we would require a tree preservation plan to be prepared regardless. That way, it is public record of what's, you know, what species over the six inches are being removed, and their health and condition. And then, you know, in regards to the waiver, or, you know, relief for those government agencies, the intention was that the relief would be provided to the City of Batavia, the township, the county, and the forest preserve, and then, I believe, I guess the library, if they needed that as well. Again, that is, as the Plan Commission said, that is a policy decision by you. If, you know, most of these projects of that significant size would be ultimately approved by the City Council. So, if, again, if the City Council was to see a Mahoney Creek today, that is something that they ultimately would be approving, and if there is not possible to plant all those trees, they would have to place them somewhere else in the community. The reason staff was suggesting this waiver and relief is that, you know, we see that sometimes, you know, these other entities go out to bid, and they are tight on their budget, and we essentially saw this as possibly just moving funds around. So, if the Park District was doing a project, they'd just be transferring it to the city to plant trees, you know, essentially. So, that's kind of where we were at, but, you know, I'm open to suggestions and opinions of anybody else.
I know that was one thing, when the school district did the last expansion at the high school, I think this is the first time during the time I've been on the council that we actually had anything to do with a landscaping plan or approval on that. I think it actually ended up becoming a conditional use on the property out there for them to do the landscaping along Main Street and along Wilson Street, and plant the trees that they have out there. So, I would like to see us keep that in there, and then have that discussion at each project when they come through, because I think it's important, again, that we hold the other entities in town to the same standards we're putting on every homeowner in this town, you know, or every developer in this town.
Yeah, it would allow you to, you know, review it and decide if you wish to waive it, or a partial waiver or what have you. So, I mean, that would give you that opportunity.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to have that discussion every time, rather than just blanket it. I think I'd also like to throw in that I would like to see the penalty for accidentally removing a tree to be significantly more. It happens all the time where entities accidentally cut down a tree, and they're going to be like, "Oh, that cost us $400? Okay," and they, it's not that big of a deal. So, I think it needs to be punitive. I mean, that's not punitive to the developers, and now Kevin's going to tell me, "You can't do that."
No, actually, there's some legal precedent. There's the Wrongful Tree Cutting Act, which requires treble damages. If somebody, if I cut my neighbor's tree down, and it, now it's, you know, there's some nuances to it, but there is some precedent for that.
I think we actually have had, in the recent past, that happened to us, and we ended up negotiating a settlement with the entity that damaged the tree.
I just think, you know, to some of the projects we've got coming up along Main Street and other places, that this is going to come into play, because there are, I'm sure, trees that are going to have to come down to do what we're going to do out there, to curb and gutter that. And then, I think that that's important, that when we do a project, we hold ourselves to the same standards that we want the rest of the community to have.
Abby?
I'm fully in favor of having this in our code. I love the idea, and I really like the idea of making it punitive to cut down a tree.
Regarding that, I will consult with staff and the city attorney and see what our options are. And when we come back to you, we'll adjust that number. In regards, you know, to the government agency thing, I fully agree. I will make sure that it is explicit that, you know, that's something that you can review, you know, while we are discussing this. Is it something that you want, just generally, that a government agency has the, you know, they can ask for relief from City Council, or is it something that you would like to apply, you know, at least a one-for-one replacement for government agencies? I'm just trying to be, when we're here talking.
I would think it should be in the ordinance, like, one-to-one. And then, if they want to ask for relief, or they want to buy, you know, a two-inch tree instead of a four-inch tree to replace them with, that can be a discussion on the project levels when they come in. But I think it should be in there at one-to-one. You know, I just, I don't want to see us in the situation where everything else has trees, and we're all happy with that, and then you drive past another place, and there's nothing there, because they did a project, and they didn't want to put them back in.
Rahat?
So, because I work for a government agency, so I have to vouch for a government agency. Carriage Crest is a classic example where we'll be removing trees, but there will be no space to put back trees. So, we'll be seeking a relief. I'm just letting you know right now, so, because there is not going to be any space there.
Thank you, Rahat.
Yeah, and that's, again, something that I understand, and if that means that maybe we throw a few more at places where they came down, and we didn't replace them in parkways or along other roadways, then I think we try to do that, even if it's just in that neighborhood.
George?
I'm all for this effort. I take some pause, though, when I hear and read mention of expanding this potentially to individual homeowners somewhere down the road. Personally, I consider that excessive government overreach. I have a quarter acre of land myself, 20 trees on my property. If I choose to take one down for a reason other than what is listed in your criteria, I would really have an issue if the government of Batavia says, "Sorry, you can't take that down." So personally, I will vote no on all of these things, if there is mention of individual residences being held to the same criteria as the developments for developers, government, what have you, which, just making you aware. Otherwise, I think it's a fantastic idea, but the idea of pushing this down on individual homeowners really concerns me.
Thank you. And just, you know, to put that on the record, that comment was something that was discussed at the Tree Commission level, and then that staff did bring to the Plan Commission. Ultimately, that is, again, a policymaking decision.
Of course, of course.
You know, being transparent in our process. We wanted to let the Committee of the Hall be aware of that, and that is why, you know, we are presenting what we are today. And then, you know, we can, after seeing projects that, how this is implemented, we can explore expanding it at that time, if it is a desire of the City Council.
Sure, sure. And to keep in mind, that would have to involve an ordinance change, because we specifically exempt single-family and two-family units in this ordinance. So, if that's something that the council finds is a policy they want to adopt, we would have to effectively, you know, proactively amend the ordinance to do that.
With that exemption, the way it's written in there now, would that exempt the private side of the property and the public side and the parkway?
No, the parkway is still governed by the city.
Okay, okay. Because that, to me, is what I'm more concerned about, and I'm kind of with George. I don't, if I decide to take down the elm tree that broke apart behind my shed that nobody else can see, should I have to put another tree up in my yard? No, I don't think so. But if the, you know, maple tree dies out in the parkway, yes, I think I should have to replace that.
Oh, yeah, the parkway, completely, yeah, parkway, that's been precedent, and completely understand and agree. I'm just talking about the rest of the property. I would take umbrage with that, for sure.
Abby?
There any discussion with the Tree Commission about some of the more shrubby trees that are super undesirable, like buckthorn and honeysuckle being on this undesirable list?
So, I worked, in regards to the Tree Commission, I worked directly with Scott Haynes. Scott Haynes, you know, who is our Public Properties Superintendent, he is the staff liaison for the Tree Commission, and he was, he provided me the undesirable tree list. I can check with him. I believe, you know, and I guess in his maybe interpretation, or my interpretation of a tree, that those are more of a shrub versus, you know, a growth deciduous tree. But that is something that we can easily add, just to be explicitly clear. That is something that staff, you know, if we did see on a plan, we would, we would not allow if we were able to prohibit it.
Okay, good. Buckthorns get big enough that they're tree-ish. I think they would qualify.
It's a tree-ish, but it's a weed.
It's a weed?
It's a weed.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I'm saying, like, let's get it on that list so that we can require it to be removed.
That would be something we would definitely not.
Thousands of hours of volunteers going into the forest preserves every year just to remove that.
As one that has to take them out of my own yard, I would definitely, whatever we can do to take it out, absolutely.
Or if there's other ordinances, we can sprinkle that into, like, let's just get rid of all of the buckthorns.
My whole neighborhood could get razed down. It's the worst. It's a barrier between houses.
Mark?
One more thing. On the replacement of trees, did you say that that's within the property that it got torn down in? So, if somebody took down a large tree, then they have to put up a dozen other trees in that property? And if they can't, then you're saying in lieu of, or can we say, "Hey, put trees here, here, and here"? I mean, can we, I'd like maybe to have a little bit more control over it, because I'm, I guess, to us, the question of the city is, what happens to that in lieu of cash? Does that just go into the general fund, and then we do something, or does that go towards parkway trees? It would have to be something that I would make sure that we're still putting up trees with it, if that's the intent.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that the statute reads is that the developer would have to demonstrate that they're unable to plant the replacement tree. So, they have an obligation to demonstrate that. It's not like, "I'd rather pay than plant the trees."
No, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is that I want to make sure that the money goes to a place that will plant trees somewhere eventually, and that they also can't just say that, "Oh, one of those 10 trees is the parkway tree." The parkway tree is separate, correct? This is not.
So, similar to what we did with the sidewalk program, where someone pays a fee in lieu of where there's no interconnection with other sidewalk, we can similarly do, set up a fund for these monies to be used toward infill trees, I guess is what you'd call it.
They would not be able to take, you know, down a bunch of trees and say, "Okay, well, now I'm going to plant all the parkway trees," even though that's their obligation. That, no, they would not be able to do that.
So, the way that the fee in lieu is structured, that it specifically states that it must be placed in a fund to be used for the acquisition, installation, and maintenance of replacement trees in the public right-of-way or city-owned property. You know, so, I can throw out a scenario for you. You know, let's say we have a vacant parcel on, you know, Main Street that's developing for some level of commercial. You know, if there is 10 trees on the property, and they're all above six inches, you know, if they come through development, they figure out that they can't, you know, replace, they can't fit all those trees on the property. They place what they have to, outside of what's already required by the code, meaning parkway trees, and then landscape islands, and some of those other scenarios. They would then pay the $400 per replacement tree. So, if, you know, if it was a, you know, a 12-inch tree, you know, they would require they have two replacement trees, so that'd be $800. And then, again, that goes into that fund, and then, you know, Public Works would ultimately be utilizing those funds to put them on city property in the city right-of-way.
I know that that was one of the questions when the county did the roundabout. They took a lot of trees down there to get through the west end of the park there. Well, they planted those all over in their forest preserves and other places, but they did put money into, you know, reforesting those somewhere else. Okay, there are no other questions? I think we got direction on where that's going to go, and then those, the stuff that'll get changed and okay by legal, that'll be for the next council meeting, right, November 6th?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Next is item number eight, which is Ordinance 2351, mending the City of Batavia subdivision code Title XI of the city code.
Yeah, I don't think any vote was taken on the last ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. But maybe we should back up and do that.
We will back up on item number seven, which is Ordinance 2342, mending the City of Batavia subdivision code Title XI of the city code, establishing tree preservation regulations. I'll make the motion that we send that to council.
Second?
Are we, but we're looking for, to add or change language on the penalty, so we just don't know what that figure is right now.
Right, we don't know what that figure will be, or what we should have in there, but that should be something that we, we just want to amend that at council, or do you want to make a change to that now?
I think you can, no, we will just amend the ordinance to reflect what we can legally oppose.
Okay, and that's fine.
Yeah.
We can do that at council level, then.
Right, we'll have a revised ordinance that'll reflect that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, motion by Wolf, and then second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That carries. And now, we are at item number eight, Ordinance 2351.
True.
Yeah, and this is another set of ordinance, or some small changes to the subdivision code that we did take through Plan Commission, which is the normal process for subdivision review. Essentially, there's two amendments being proposed. The first would update the standards for subdivision, and essentially, what it would say is that any division of a property that would create a development lot, that would be required to be accomplished by a subdivision under the proposed text. So, essentially, this would give us the opportunity as a city to review, basically, if somebody was proposing a lot division, you know, rather than potentially them creating a lot that's not buildable, the subdivision process would be there for us to review zoning standards, but then also needs that would otherwise be accomplished through a subdivision, and that could be provisions for easements, or utilities, sidewalks, land cash fees, and et cetera, that all are empowered through subdivision approvals. So, again, this wouldn't be for any lot division, but it would just be in cases that do create a development lot, that basically a subdivision would have to happen. Oftentimes, we're also seeing with new development, commercial industrial development, they're coming in for a subdivision anyway to do easements and things of that sort anyway. So, again, it's kind of a, this is more, it's a change, but the staff believes it would be helpful for, you know, the development side, as well as the city, you know, making sure that those requirements are being met. I mentioned detention and some other things, too. So, there's a couple of things that this would empower us to really have the ability to review. The other item that's on this, in the proposed ordinance, would be to update the expiration period for subdivision plats. If you recall, we've had a couple over the past couple of years that we've come back to the council to extend the periodicity for the plat. Right now, it requires that after final plat approval is done, that it be recorded within three months. And within that time, you know, as I outlined in the memo, you know, development has, you know, changed in a lot of ways, where a lot of the, what we're receiving at the approval time is a preliminary engineering level of approval. And then, with building permit, they're coming back and redoing, or I should say, doing their final engineering, and that usually goes hand-in-hand with the permit process. So, you know, there is a timing threshold that, you know, in staff's mind, wasn't really envisioned with that process that was outlined with the, when the subdivision code was substantially written in the 70s. So, and in particular, you know, we have outside reviews, or agencies reviewing things. We've had a couple of instances with projects recently with, you know, needing KDOT review and approval, and, you know, that's also, you know, they're also reviewing engineering for, as part of that process, too. So, there's things So there's things to add to that time, as well as just the process of recording, you know, all of that having to be done within three months. That's where, what we're proposing is basically, at the Community Development, or the Community Development Director can extend by written request that three-month period to a six-month period with a three-month extension, and then anything greater than that up to a year. So an additional six-month extension would require City Council approval, like the ones that you have seen over the past several months, and actually over the past several years. So the commission did review those. They did have some follow-up discussions regarding the proposed plat change or requirement for plating, but they did ultimately recommend approval of both those items. That are before you tonight with Ordinance 2351, and we do recommend approval as provided.
I think that's a good idea. I think it makes it a little bit easier and a lot less time involved if staff can approve the extension on that. I think that makes it easier to try to get all, everybody else's outside input done on it and everything back. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, not, I will make the motion that we send Ordinance 2351 to council, amending the City of Batavia subdivision code Title 11 of city code.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Solfa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just said what's going on the agenda.
Tonight, the two memos are flipped.
Yeah, the memos, I know, I just opened it up and I'm like.
I just noticed that myself.
It's like, wait a minute.
At least we had both of them there.
Both there, I was confused at first.
Yeah. Okay, up next then is Resolution 23120R, approving task order number eight with Engineering Resources Associates Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $39,890 to design and obtain construction permit for Fox River stabilization. Rod?
Thank you. So in 2016, I'm sorry, in 2016, we observed some erosion along the riverbank on the west side, so we hired a consultant to perform some construction and stabilize the river back in 2018. If you walk along the west bank, you'll see that there are some steps. That is what was done in 2018. But very recently, we have observed more erosion along the west side and also on the east side by the Larson Becker parking lot that used to be called Larson Becker parking lot. So we have, we worked with ERA or Engineering Resource Associate back in 2016 to design that stabilization. We were very happy with them at that time. They were hired on a competitive basis back in 2016. So this time, because of the time, we said, why go through the process when we know their work and were very happy with them? So we invited them, walked with them, the riverbank. There is a portion of wall, retaining wall, behind the sturdy shelter that has collapsed since 2018. So that needs to be put back again, because that was supporting some of the electrical infrastructure out there. There is this switchgear and a transformer right behind the sturdy shelter that was supported by that wall. So we need to get this work designed and permitted by Army Corps and IDNR as soon as possible, and get that work done next summer when the water level is low. So we just worked with ERA, just one consultant, asked them to give us a proposal and kind of ran with it, because we kind of like the prices and their work. So just bring it in front of you for your approval. We plan to design, it's just not efficient to design piecemeal stuff, so we want to design that portion of retaining wall, plus design the portion behind the Larson Becker parking lot, so that we can permit everything. What our plan is, we are going to go out for bid for both portions as an alternate. We'll see how the bid prices come in. Based on that, you will make the decision whether you want to do both the west side and east side, or you want to just do one. So that's the plan, so that we permit it. The permit is typically good for five years, so if you decide not to do it next year, but do it in 2025 or 2028, it's already been permitted, and we'll just go out for bid again. So we want to do a comprehensive design for both sections and maybe build it at one time or build it two different times. At this time, we are just budgeting for the west side. So depending on the bid numbers, if you want to amend the budget, or if we find money from the tree preservation, maybe we use that to stabilize the project, so.
One question. The piece that's on the west side, that's retaining wall that's coming apart, is that one that was already replaced by us? Or is that a section that was done years ago and now is failing?
Yeah, I'm not, no, we didn't do it in 2018, no.
Okay, so it wasn't done with the bridge or any of the other stuff?
No, no.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, you know, whatever we do, we think is going to last for 25 years or more, because I'm sure that that affects the retaining walls or whatever we put in there.
Yes, that will be the goal.
Anybody else have any questions? Abby?
This interfere, would you anticipate with any, when we do the river master plan with Hitchcock is putting together, would it interfere or overlap with any of those plans? And then also with the, we've tossed around the idea of, you know, someday, wouldn't it be great if Larson Becker gets redeveloped and we get the bike path to extend along the river around that somehow, or?
So the design that we will be doing, we will keep provision for the bike path to somehow go through that stabilization portion of it. So I did have a conversation with the consultant, so we'll be walking them through to make sure that we leave some space for the bike path to go up that development.
Yeah, I think it's important if we get to stabilize now, that saves even more footage for the bike path to go to. If we waited five years to do it, there might be enough there to get it in there without having to go back and replace it. So I think it's important that we try to get this done as soon as we can. Okay, any other questions?
And, sorry, if I may add.
Sure.
The consultant will come in front of you, that some of you were not in the council last time, so what they did is they came up with a couple of alternatives, and they will present it to you with pictures and all that, so you can pick and choose. They will have a dollar value next to it, so you can decide what you like, what you'd like to see, and then we'll do the final design after that.
Big chunks of rock so that the bass can hide in there. Okay. There are no other questions? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 23120R, approving task order number eight with Engineering Resources Associates Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $39,890 to design and obtain construction permits for Fox River stabilization.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one passes as well.
Thank you so much.
As we're going through these, I guess we should, I think they all could go on.
Consent.
Consent. Unless we want to talk about stabilization along the river. Depends on what the agenda's like.
Right, and then there will be the addition of the penalty provision to.
That will have to be on the regular agenda.
That was the plan, is to have that one on the regular.
Yeah, that one will have to be on regular agenda. Okay, and we'll move on to Ordinance 2347, amending liquor code for the creation of a Class E6 liquor license for sale and consumption in an arts, crafts, cooking, or entertainment studio and other purposes.
This ordinance does what Alan just described. It allows for alcoholic beverage sales at a arts, crafts, or cooking studio while classes are going on, so that's what the E6 license does. It's for those purposes while the class is going on. It allows partially consumed bottles of wine to be removed if they so choose. We also did a couple of other cleanups while we're at it, amending the liquor code. So we cleaned up Class C2 licenses. We had language in there that excluded businesses that qualify for another category. We changed that. So now that anyone, it allows for additional people to take the C2 license for the carry-in of alcohol to the premises. We established a $500 fee for the new E6 license for the arts, crafts, or cooking studios. We amended the outdoor adjunct license to allow for arts, crafts, and cooking studios to also have outdoor events should they choose. And then at the request of the police department while we were at, like I said, while we were making code changes, they have asked that we allow a vendor to also do fingerprinting should they choose. They explained a number of instances, you know, if there's a person in the jail, or if, you know, there's staffing or whatever. It just gives us another option, and we can obviously run fingerprints faster if need be ourselves, but it just gives us some additional flexibility. Abby, answer any questions?
Do you have any questions? I have one. The licenses for all the different things, would that be per, like, event, or is that for a year?
For a year.
So if an entity wanted it, they'd get it for a year, and then they would use it?
Yeah, it's those who are coming with a business model of, for instance, paint and SIP, that is their operation, and so they want all their customers to be allowed to carry in liquor for consumption on premises.
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, is there any businesses in our town that have indicated they're interested in this license?
As a matter of fact, yes.
Fantastic.
So, and it is a couple of the board workshop businesses that combined the macrame and the clay. They anticipated that they may have some need for a license of this nature. And then we also have new businesses that are considering sites in our downtown who looked through our code and did not see that we specifically had licenses such as some other communities have. And so we looked at the models in.
This is from St. Charles.
In St. Charles. Ours is pretty much similar to what St. Charles has. Yeah, thank you, sure.
Well, because then it gives another opportunity for somebody to have a business like that or have that as part of their business model.
It's happening more and more all the time. We get these parties that they want to have and benefit of somebody for just like one day or something. So I think it's good. I don't see any problem. I talked to the police department, they don't seem to have any issues with it.
Motion that we recommend Ordinance 2347, amending the liquor code for creation of a Class E6 liquor license for sale and consumption at an arts, crafts, cooking, or entertainment studio and other purposes.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Vogelsinger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one passes. Okay, project status.
All right. Well, this is the second to last presentation that I'll be doing on that 2021 to 2023 strategic action plan, and I'm really pleased to share with you some of the progress that we've made on the projects in this plan. Just as a reminder, we had actions identified in these five different areas of economic vitality, transportation, infrastructure, the river, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. And in the first area of economic development was to hire the economic development manager, which was done, but also to create an economic development strategic plan. Due to some personnel changes during that three-year period of time, we were not able to complete that action. However, it has become a key action to be completed in the next period of our strategic plan, which is still in draft form and has not yet been approved by City Council, but that will be coming back to you soon. Actively marketing Batavia to new businesses was completed, and then the promoting opportunities for downtown redevelopment was tied to the city's RFP process. It resulted in one proposed development, however, we did not accomplish a redevelopment agreement. Just as, you know, we see in the news all the time, it's a difficult time from the financial perspective to see these projects come up out of the ground, and I think that is exactly what was at issue here. And then also to continue to implement aspects of the streetscape plan. So we are working with an engineering firm for design of catenary-like project on North River Street, had a little bit of a setback with our newspaper boy arch, that we could not fit our larger vehicles through there, and so that is back at the landscape architect for redesign. And so both of those projects will be moved into the 2024 budget. But I don't know, if you're driving down Route 31, I think the bases for our new entryway signs, particularly, I see the one at Homestead all the time, they look really great. And I'm so glad that we decided to go with the natural stone bases, because in years to come, when we feel that our entryway signage needs an update, it will be far less expensive to do that. We can simply replace the top. And of course, these next few pages are for those that like to dive into the details of what we managed to do in every quarter of the previous years. The next section is the transportation, and our first goal there was to continue to pursue implementation of a road diet on Illinois Route 31. And so in the last quarter, we made our application for the construction permit. We actually have received some notes back from IDOT on that, which, you know, aren't too many, and engineering is in the process of reviewing those, but we're still confident that this is a project that is on track once we get that construction permit to move forward as early as April of 2024. That will convert everything from Fabian Parkway all the way to Mooseheart Road to a road diet, with the exception of the downtown portion from Wilson to Maine that will be subject to further engineering and probably will not see those changes until 2026. The elements of our transportation objectives that were talked about in our bike ped plan that we recently adopted, those have been, have become part of our next strategic plan. And so you'll see that as part of the 2024 budget and included within the next period's Again, the 2024 draft budget will include an additional $300,000 for the recommended year-one project in the bike and pedestrian plan. And our next section having to do with infrastructure objectives. The developing and infrastructure funding policy has now become part of our regular budgeting and strategic planning process. Reviewing the service level objectives was completed in a prior period. With regard to enhancing the safety of bikers and walkers in our neighborhood, recently City Council approved hiring an engineering study of several collector roads where the highest incident of traffic accidents have occurred in order to analyze whether reducing speed limits on these roads would improve safety. And the next section is our river objectives. The first and big one is creating the master plan for the development of our riverfront. City Council voted to move forward with Concept B, looking at the configuration for the river post dam removal. And that is the concept that includes a series of step-down dams which preserve the level of water in the pond, and now the consultant is working to finalize the master plan utilizing this concept. We continue to actively market the riverfront development opportunities, and a key element of that will be the downtown plan, which will both be a guide for us as a city, but also will illustrate to potential developers what the city has in mind as a vision for what that should look like in the future. And then we had always been kind of looking at inexpensive ways in order to, you know, shift people's focus toward the river, and the Army Corps of Engineers helped us out with that by completing their report on the effect of the removal of all of the low-hut dams, and they held three different meetings nearby, and so the city promoted resident participation in those meetings. And the last section is to the diversity, equity, and inclusion. We actually recently held our last meeting that was. We actually recently held our last meeting that was, several employees and also Leah Lehman joined us in reading The Sum of Us about the effects that racism has on everyone and the positive effects of overcoming racism. And it was very healthy discussions, very interesting. And then now we are planning an all-employee meeting for January of 2024 with a guest speaker. And the idea there is twofold, to launch a DEI value statement for our organization and then also to launch an employee survey about our current DEI culture. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me about where things are at.
It's good that we have regular updates, so we constantly think about it.
Absolutely.
What we've said we were going to do, what we've actually accomplished, and what we still need to do. Because I think if we don't talk about it regularly, we don't achieve things we say we're going to do, so.
Exactly. And, and these periodic reports are good, something that Max and I have been looking at and, you know, we're not ready to make the leap to, but eventually we'd like to get to a space where it was sort of up to date to the day of where we're at on these activities. And there, there are models out there right now that are like that. But right now, I think as we're moving to a new format of strategic action plan led by Max Weiss, we want to get ourselves comfortable with that new plan before we, you know, implement some new technology. I don't think we're quite ready for that yet, but we will be soon.
Mark.
Yeah, I think something I'd like to see as we go forward, and I know that when you said things like, hey, we're, we're done marketing downtown, I know you mean that from the aspect of, hey, that was our goal, was to market downtown better. But we obviously never stop, and that should always be a part of the strategic plan, is that we're always, what's the next creative way to market? And oh, the marketing has to change. So some things when they say they're done, I know you're, it's a bit of a checkbox, but I want to make sure we don't have that mindset that is like, okay, we're done. Because so many of these things are never done, and some of them where they get pushed, that's why I was saying we really need to. I like the three-year because it, we can focus and get some things done, but we need to be thinking five, 10, 15, 20, 50 years because as if 50/50 split, you want to build a bridge or not, but you need to save money to do it. And so that's not in a three-year plan to build a bridge. So, but it's a strategic plan if somebody really wants to build a bridge, so.
What I like in the direction that we're taking with the upcoming strategic plan is that a focus on outcomes is, you know, we're always striving to accomplish what that outcome is. But in the three-year time period for that strategic plan, there are some very specific things that we're going to do, and we're going to be able to tell if we did them or we didn't do them. And then also in the measurements category, what effect did that have on moving us closer to the outcome? Or didn't it move us closer to the outcome and we decide that we need to do something different? So I think that that has been a significant refinement that will be very impactful to showing, as you say, continuous improvement on those items.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item 12, which is others. Does anybody have any others tonight? Abby?
Questions? One, is the plane commission meetings, are they recorded and put on BATV?
No, they are not. We, we record the, usually we record the transcripts, but we don't, they're not like broadcast.
I was looking for, I was wanting to listen to the discussion about the two agenda items today and couldn't find them. The minutes weren't up yet from a couple of those meetings and then the recordings I was looking through that I wanted to make sure, I just wasn't missing it. And then another question is, when do you anticipate we could bring back for discussion the gaming?
The gaming, we can bring back at any time. However, I think it would be important to send a letter out to the people who have a gaming license right now so that they would have an opportunity to participate in the discussion. So maybe a month from now? That sounds good.
It's awfully close to Thanksgiving. I'm just thinking how many people are going to be here.
Do you want to move it to January? Just because then following Thanksgiving, I know that, you know, mayor often says that, you know, people have some obligations where they might have to miss meetings. So we can put it in January.
I'm fine with that. We can.
Okay.
Put it up there and then make sure that we publicize it beforehand, so both sides can say what they want to say.
In which case, I do have an other. I'd like to put out there for my project status. But the city launched, you know, we purchased a Qualtrics license in order to get more engagement with the community on important issues. And this past Thursday, the city created a survey about, to seek feedback on the setup of North River Street over this last season. And the survey has been out there for, I guess, about five days now, and we have 363?
425.
425 responses.
Good.
Really is, is quite outstanding. And that was just being distributed by Main Street's weekly update, RE News, and flyers at the farmer's market and the businesses adjacent to North River Street.
Several people on council have shared it, too.
Great, great. Thank you very much. But it's, it's proving to be a really good tool for us.
And I forgot, Max, remind me, is there any way that we're able to determine whether or not somebody's filled out the survey more than once?
Yes.
We restricted that feature. Yeah, we restricted that feature for this survey, so if you try to take it twice, it won't let you. There's a number of options we can do. We could have flagged.
I think that's good for all surveys.
Yeah, exactly.
Is not to let somebody fill it out five times.
I'm a big fan of the option of you, it'll just let you submit it five times, but then we'll know you submitted it five times. But we chose to just cut it off. If you try to go back, it uses your IP address, so.
Let people know we're not doing that.
You have to get multiple computers.
Be more fun to see somebody post on Facebook, hey, filled it out 27 times a day. It's okay, we only counted one.
Right. Thank you.
Is that all by, is that all figured out just by email address, or?
I didn't use your IP.
To get it, okay. All right. Now we needed a motion to go into executive session for land acquisition.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who's the second? Mark? Okay. So we'll have a quick two-minute recess and then we'll get to.